Ready, three, two, one, take three.
Hey everyone and welcome back to my channel and everyone else's channels who are recording the city council debate. We have people coughing, woo! There's Wyatt! Jacqueline, why can't I hit you? Alright, well the candidates, please come on up. Abby, Teak.
Abby!
Continuing the book report.
Alright. Woo! Abby!
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 Abby! Abby! Abby!
Teak, go back down.
Dear members of Blisscraft, I am here today to bring you all a new city council member. Maybe not me, maybe Ju, oh well not Ju, maybe it'll be Teak. But here's the thing, if you want to be heard, if you want a voice, if you want potatoes and retacos all day, every day, then it is I that stands before you who you should choose. Do you want more opportunities to be a fool, jump on the huge trampoline or dance to Freak of the Week in the liquor hole? All whilst eating potatoes? I'm your girl. I promise to make national days for every single one of you. National Sarah Day, National Jacqueline Day, you will get one. And if you want more, my god, you can have more. I promise to... I promise to contribute to making the whole, the world of Blisscraft. The world of Blisscraft a humble and vibrant, full of acceptance and care. That is difficult because there is already so much, but I will take the plunge and accept the challenge. I hope I have won you all beautiful people over and that you will go and vote for me. Thank you and good night, my beautiful people, and I will see you in the city council offices. Good day!
Abby! Abby!
Alright, Teak, come on up. Start whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Welcome everyone and thank you so very much for coming out to support the candidates in the running for city council. I would like to start off by congratulating my fellow candidates for making the decision to run for this position, as it is a very important position to work as a team, to, with fellow Blisscraft members to ensure our wonderful server continues to grow. From the first day I arrived here on Blisscraft, I knew I wanted to become more involved. From serving on the police force, as a therapist at the asylum, bouncer for the liquor hole, and running my very own candy shop. I constantly spend time in the helper role and try to make this server an even better place than it already is. It probably won't surprise you that I have decided to run for city council. As a city council member, I will strive to continue to make improvements on the server for every member here at Blisscraft. The city council works side by side with the owner and the administration to ensure members get what they deserve. As a city council member, I will ensure that you have a memorable year, and I will propose to have even more amazing events, new businesses to grow many more jobs and many more ideas that fellow members may have. Today I'm asking for your vote for city council. Should you elect me, I will listen to your concerns and work hard for you, the people of Blisscraft. I would also like to say that you have a difficult decision on whom to vote for and I'm grateful for the opportunity to run. So thank you and please vote Teak for city council.
Alright, at this time, will both candidates please come up? And the debate will start. We will be taking questions from the audience to start this off. Wyatt has his hand up, please come up to the podium.
Thank you. Uh, my name is MC Camera Wyatt.
Speak up.
I am a, I'm MC Camera Wyatt. I'm a member of the city council and I have some questions for both of you. This first question is for both of you. How do you pretend, how do you plan to protect the citizens of Blisscraft with their health wise? As you know, we've got mold spreading around and everything. How do you plan to contain all that to where the citizens don't get sick or even die from it?
Well, obviously, we do have those issues and although we do have the hospital and the healthcare offices, I will go out of my way to the search for any health issues and I will report them to whom they may concern. And if I can't find anyone that will concern, I will take matters into my own hands and clear it up with my own hands to ensure that it does not spread. And I will also make sure that I let all people know on the server that what is going on, so they know to keep clear of certain areas and that way they don't cause themselves more harm. And as long as I know that I have at least warned people of what's going on, I will feel much better. But I will not be satisfied until I have done sufficient actions.
For me, as you guys know, that we do now have health inspection business, as well as the BBB. And for me, I would feel like investing some government funds into, or personal funds via donations to those, to the health inspection center would be more beneficial in the mold outbreak situation. And there's very other, there's many other different directions we could go with that. And also investing into ensuring everyone gets a health checkup every once in a while, say like once a month, to ensure that they don't carry the mold with them. And so that can stop the spread of the mold.
Skate Queen, do you have any questions?
No.
Way to be a great admin, Skate Queen.
Does it have to be both of them?
It could just be directed to one of them if you want it.
Okay. Abby?
Yes.
What would my national day be?
Your national day will just be National Jacqueline Day and we will basically just be celebrating you, your existence, your part on the server, everything. It will be a complete Jacqueline Day. You know, anything from Jacqueline heads to Jacqueline banners, food, parties, you know, whatever you wanted on that day, we would have.
Pickles and unicorns.
Can I make a statement to that? Why don't we celebrate every member every day?
We'd, um, well, that is something we obviously do do, but I feel like we should not, we should dedicate one day to every single person because at the end of the day, just like everyone was born on one individual day, people are like, you know, I feel like we praise, we obviously do praise everyone as a whole on the server. However, I feel that we should all have a day to be dedicated, that way everyone is equal, rather than spending an hour on one person for their birthday or thirty minutes on another person for their birthday, a whole day dedicated to a person so everyone has an equal amount of time to be praised and celebrated. It's just, I think, I feel it's bad quality. Obviously, equality is definitely visual on the server and it is on the server, but when we have birthday parties as such, as an example, maybe Brilliant would last three hours, but then Jacqueline's could only last an hour, whereas a day is a day and everyone gets the same amount of time.
Okay, now I understand. And I totally agree with you on that, Abby.
This is for both of you. If elected, what are your biggest plans? What would be the first thing that you do when you're elected in office? What would you do on your first day? And then also tell us some of your big plans of what you plan to do with your time in city council.
Well, if Abby doesn't mind, I'll go first on this one. I would, I would first, if I was voted in, I would take the day to, host a town meeting so that I can meet each and every one of you individually and discuss any concerns that you may or may not have with me being in the office, as well as any ideas that you may have for the server as a whole. As far as my first project goes, I would still work diligently on a donation center as I had previously discussed with you Wyatt and other members that were at the previous debate. The idea was to create a donation center that everyone from the server could donate their unwanted items or items that they couldn't use anymore, to give them to newer members who may not have the money or, you know, have any kind of ideas to what they want to build and use that to create bigger and better places for these newer people or those who may not be able to afford the materials needed.
Okay, um, going back for a second, town meetings are happening. I, I have announced that town meetings will be happening monthly here on the server in this here auditorium, every Saturday at the beginning of each month, every first Saturday, unless stated otherwise. They will be at 6:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. And, uh, they are to not be recorded, by the way. But, the donation center, the donation center is something that we have planned to do. We just haven't gotten around to it because, as you know, we're building a secret project. Well, actually, two kind of secret, well, actually, kind of three. And the fire station. So we haven't really gotten around to the donation center and no one new has joined the server since the last election. So, you know.
And that was one of my plans to do if elected in office.
Yes.
Well, like I said, excuse me, you know, he had asked what the plan would be and as far as the town meeting goes, uh, the reason I said that I would initiate a town meeting to individually meet everyone personally to discuss that stuff is because they may, you know, the first one hasn't even started yet and there may be concerns between now and then that they may have for me as a new city council member.
Right. Okay. Abby?
Well, like, um, Teak, obviously, I will want to be celebrating my achievements. So I will plan to hold a server mixer so I can meet everyone formally as their new city council member. And my office will be an open door policy, but I will also have a chest where you can write down any concerns you have and put them in the chest for me to find. And then my first big project will be to fix each and every one of those. But I will not just be restricted to myself to one big project at a time. I will gonna be setting myself mini goals, whether these be weekly or, you know, bi-weekly, to maybe fix something, upgrade something, or just make something happen on a server which is impending or hasn't happened yet at all. And also, what I want, would like to do is every, say, every three months, in that time, depending on how many new members we have on the server, hold mixers so everyone can kind of get together and get to know each other more. I want to be able to hold more events, so whether that be more boat wars or, you know, anything of that nature. They will be some of my projects and just general helping out wherever I can.
When you say upgrade, what do you mean by upgrade?
So if there is anything that would be, want to be remodeled or redecorated, like buildings, anything of that sort, just like remodeled or upgraded or, you know, like redesigned.
Okay. This is a question for both of you, kind of regarding what Abby just said. I want Teak to go first. Uh, what are three buildings that you feel that need to be upgraded? Or remodeled?
Give me a moment to think about that.
Sure.
Well, the first building I would choose would be the Health Inspector Office. And I know it's not like a brand new build, but it's not an old build either. The reason I say the Health Inspector is that way that people can come in, take care of their business and, you know, don't have to worry about discussing their business with anyone. Say if they want to keep a secret, um, situation under control and not have to tell anyone. I know there's already a chest there that they can do privately, but also when you sign that book, you're signing your name to it as well. So I would find an alternative for that in that system, as well as growing, uh, the business by having more inspectors and those who can help kind of monitor the server with, you know, the mold outbreak and other things and give them more equipment to handle those situations. I would also upgrade the insurance company to where, say for example, if someone kills you and you lose all of your items or whatever and you end up having to go to the hospital like some members have had to in the past, I would offer more variety of what you can ensure, not just buildings, because some people do, uh, lose some items when they die, whether they despawn or whatever, and it's not necessarily their fault that they die and lose their items. So I feel like we should grow the insurance company, not only for that, but also for the businesses as well. And also grow the sanitation department to, again, help with the health inspectors with cleaning up any sort of virus or mold outbreak that we may have or any future issues we may have.
Okay, and Abby, I will be making comments on both of your guys' thoughts on those after. Abby, three buildings?
The first thing I probably would want to change or upgrade would maybe be the courthouse. It's a very, it's a sizable business building and it's perfectly sized, but I feel like we could expand maybe underneath to allow for more space for, you know, like temporary custody while court cases are taking place for inmates. And also maybe a way to get from the courthouse to the police station or wherever the cells are, directly, maybe whether that be through a tunnel or some kind of travel system, which doesn't mean that you have to go outside of the building through the server and then into the police station. And then I would want to change the library to maybe expand and add more room for group activities, so group tables and maybe like a closed-off private area for when we do have the book readings, rather than just an open space, like a more of a quiet area for people who want to read quietly on their own and don't maybe want to take part in the readings. And, and then like, uh, Teak, I would also expand the insurance company, maybe adding more offices, more departments, sorry, more departments for different insurances, and more, more space, you know, like maybe like a area, like a filing room to keep all the information on each person's insurance, because the more insurances we have, the more paperwork there's gonna be. And you want to kind of keep it separate for each individual person, so a filing room for everyone's paperwork as well, just to make things more organized and more usable in a way. Yeah.
Okay. First, I'm going to agree that the insurance company does need a remake and an upgrade. I, I agree with that. While the building was nice for what it did before, if we plan to upgrade any kind of insurance stuff or whatever with anything, it definitely is going to need to be bigger and, um, have like a filing area. So I agree with that. We'll do the, uh, health building and the sanitation department first. Sanitation department is a really ugly building. Um, as everyone knows, I built that in about twenty minutes' time, the entire building, all of it. Um, as a very quick building, it definitely needs to be remade. Uh, I don't deny that. It was kind of just thrown there so that way it was there. The health building, on the other hand, the Health Inspector Building, is exactly the same as the Better Business Bureau and I do not think that it needs to be changed one bit because it's beautiful exactly how it was and the detail that went into that build, especially on the outside of it, is absolutely fantastic if you really take a look at it. And the, the, um, you're welcome Wyatt, and the, um, way that you can put the books in the chest or whatever, you can do that anonymously. You do not have to sign the books when you are throwing someone's company under the bus for like the Health Inspector or the Better Business Bureau. You do not have to sign the books at all. That is completely up to you if you want to sign the books. So it is completely anonymous if you choose for it to be. The courthouse, I don't want to change anything with it. However, I do like the idea of, um, adding a slightly bigger filing room and also probably adding a proper like jury room, like where jury members can go and talk about the case afterwards, like in a real court. And I do like the idea of having a tunnel from the police station to there, only because for anyone that has watched my videos in the past or was a part of the first SMP, um, our old world had that and that would kind of be cool to have again.
Yes, um, I would like to comment on that.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I guess I'll start with the...
Well, if, oh, well, hold on. I have one more. The library, that is what you said, right Abby? The library? The library, the library, the enchanting and alchemy lab, the spawn building. Those are three buildings that can never ever be, uh, redone because they are so significant to this, um, server. Yeah, they're historical. Um, even town hall, but we were able to not remodel it, but extend it. It looks the exact same as it did, it's just bigger. So those are like...
Just like adding more space.
Adding more space. So you want to add maybe like a basement or something to it? We could maybe do that. I'd have to look into it, though.
Yes, you can have, so rather than when the readings take place, like they always happen upstairs, maybe like somewhere underground, so it's more of a quiet area sort of thing. Or I can just like an enclosed space for that and then the upstairs can become a quiet area for people who want to read and then you can add tables for people who want to read as a group.
Okay Wyatt, go ahead.
Okay. I basically agree with everything that Bridgette has said, her comments. I do think that the sanitation department needs completely redone. The Better Business Bureau and the Health Inspector, I don't want to change that one bit for two big reasons because for one, it was just recently built and opened, and two, uh, like Bridgette said, there is a lot of detail that has gone into it. And I also just don't think that we really need to, uh, do anything for it yet. I mean, it just did open. I do like the, I'm not dissing on any of you, by the way, I'm just like, these are just my comments. As for the library, um, I do like the idea of a basement type of area, but I don't, I love the actual build of it and I don't want anything to be changed with it because it looks beautiful on the outside. As for the courthouse, um, I completely agree with everything that Bridgette has stated. I do think that an addition should be made with a tunnel that led to the jail and courthouse. I think that would be a fantastic idea. For the jury room, I think that is a great idea. Insurance company, uh, I do completely agree with because it will be growing, I'm sure, at a good rate, so, yeah.
Jacqueline?
Yeah.
Come on up and ask some questions.
Okay. How would you feel if you were on the city council? That's for both of you.
Um, I would be absolutely honored because I, obviously, we are all aware and, um, yeah, obviously, we are all aware that I am no longer in a, as more of a responsible position as I was before, but I still think that I would like to give to the server and I still want to be able to make a difference on the server. So I'd feel completely honored if I got the role because I would like to feel that I had proved myself and I had obviously shown that I have a lot of responsibilities and I can make a difference and that I want to make a difference.
I would feel, again, very honored as Abby would, uh, simply because the people would be heard and also new ideas could be put into the server, not only from the city council standpoint, but also from the member standpoint.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask this question on behalf of Sarah. Uh, Sarah cannot attend us tonight sadly, but I think that this question is very important, uh, Sarah would have asked it. Um, what are your thoughts on potatoes?
Well, certainly, building a potato monument, of course. And definitely celebrating a potato day.
Hmm, I like the potato day thing.
As Sarah would.
Yep, I, I, sorry, Teak.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, um, I would also include potatoes as a national day as a mark of respect for, you know, potatoes, you know, potato day, yeah, linked with Sarah Day, but they will be separate days because I feel like potatoes are such a strong element on this server and they're such a big deal. I feel like potatoes are basically the queen of the server, obviously, if you don't include Bridgette, but they are like the queen of the server and I don't think that we have honored them enough.
The queen.
So I think that we need to have a national potato day and we need to have lots of events for potatoes. I think we need to have potato bobbing at Halloween and, um, potato making and, you know, I think we need to do a lot more for potatoes and I will make sure it is down in my project to honor potatoes in a way that they deserve to be.
And I'll add to that too, is that, you know, you need to celebrate Coon for potato day as well.
Hashtag Rakatos.
Yeah, we definitely... I definitely think that we need to include national days for all of past members on the server. Monumental characters on the server, I think they all need to be appreciated and I think they all need to be recognized in a national day.
And I'd also like to add that the red band that I wear on my right arm is for the bloodshed of Coon. So hashtag Coon.
Coon.
May he rest in peace. I have a question. You cannot see me because I'm in spectator mode. But I can see you. It's creepy, right?
I don't think I like this guy.
Um, neither do I.
Alright. What are three things that you have done to help the server in the past?
Go ahead, Abby.
Well, number one, I built the church so people could honor their own religion and we could support their religion and all religion. I feel like me building that was a mark of respect and shows that on this server, we do not discriminate. The second thing was that I, I have been helping and the Health Inspector's business to ensure that people are not, you know, unhealthy and that buildings are not being, like, you know, spreading unhealthiness and whatnot. And I also took part in the boat wars, um, to supply recognition of the kind of challenging, um, you know, competitive side of the server and to make, and also I think that me participating in that helped to bring people together on the server.
Well, for me, I have helped build several, um, community buildings. One, for example, would be the animal shelter, for, uh, the one that's in downtown, um, not the one that Sarah built. Don't want to take credit for something Sarah did. But, um, I've also helped other members build in their homes and their other businesses. But I have also, for the third, built my very own business and have worked with Wyatt on, in small discussions on... On and small discussions on creating a program that will feed the hungry.
Um can I add to mine? Is that okay?
Sure.
Um I ob- I have also built various buildings. I just use church as an example because I feel like that is such a big part. But I also put together the coal business to save people from having to. Go out on mine. I'm supplying people with a product that is used widely, but often less. Cause due to all that the the caving on the server and what it's kinda becoming more hard to find. Um so yeah, and I also built bit like built the key daycare, so there was no stray cats that had anywhere to go.
This is for both of you. Uh. Well, yeah. Okay, so as you two are both police officers. What are your plans to protect this members of Blesscraft from crime? From murder, from from really anything that could potentially like hurt them or hurt anyone else? Um what are your plans to protect them and as like even though you're both police officers? What would you uh input laws or anything if you're elected to the city council?
Well, if Abby doesn't mind, I'll take this one first.
Yeah, fine.
Um well, I would propose to have a patrol team that would make its rounds around the server. Ensuring that there's no griefing or you know, any creeper holes. Um and try to get to the bottom of the creeper hole issue as we've had in the past. Um and I'd also suggest to hire in the future, once we find the good candidates. For a police officer, you know, ensuring that we have backup if need be.
The fir- first thing I would do was I would like to sit down with um higher levels on the server. And devise a set of laws, which would be similar to the rules, but slightly different and more.
Enforced, maybe?
Yes, and more maybe more enforced, something that um is more goes a bit deeper than the rules may. Um so I would do that and then I would also want to have the server, you know. Surveyed and patrolled on a regular basis by a team, but I would also take it to my own hands to make sure I also patrol the server. Um and go out of my way to spend at least an hour a day, maybe, who knows? Um a certain amount of time on a day to survey, patrol server, just to make sure that there is nothing. Being skipped and nothing not being missed. I wanna make sure that I patrol enough that nothing would be missed, first of all. I don't wanna miss out on any crime or wanna have it all patrolled and I don't want anything. And I also what would like to have a quicker turnaround if there is a crime and a. And an issue that oc- that requires for a court case, um. Maybe I'm hoping that we can make the turnaround a bit quicker, so things aren't left unsettled as long. And that's what I would do.
Um I have something to add. Um I would also recommend that the prisoners who do come through our jail. Use types of tools as rehabilitation, for example. If there's work that needs to be done for the community, such as, you know, uh destroying dirt or. Repairing creeper holes, I would suggest to have the the sailmates. Come out and repair those to help them rehabilitate themselves as well as potentially lessen their sentence. If they are on good behavior during the rehabilitation stage.
Wyatt, your follow up question?
Let's, I'm going to give you an example, okay? Um let's say that recently you know about the uh BMV DMV uh murder case with Dew and I. Um what would be, if you're elected to city council, what are your plans to serve justice for cases like that? What would you, how far would you go to make sure that the per- the person who is in the right in that case gets served correctly? And the person who is doing wrong uh faces the consequence, their consequences?
I I don't, I hope you don't mind I get me getting first take, but.
Oh, you go ahead.
I would first of all, I would like to set in place to avoid these issues and maybe employing more staff to be. Lawyers for both parties in the issues. Um as that's.
I like the idea of lawyers.
As we are, as I think we currently lack, which means that the both parties actually don't have as much defense as they may need. So I would put that in place and then I would also offer emotional support for both parties. As court cases and such can be a very difficult thing to go through. And having an emotional support there will mean that the both parties will be able to cope more with the outcome. And so, you know, the prisoner, if they have to go to prison, then you know, they can have therapy to help them get through that. Without with minimum, without having a breakdown or whatever. And also if the on the other side, if um. They were not to have any, if they were to be let off, then support for the other party. In coping with the whole prospect that they haven't maybe set down, they have found justice. So that's the first things I would do.
I would uh prom- propose to hire security guards for the BMV. During business hours to ensure the safety of not only the workers, but also the the members and the community leaders. As they conduct their business there at the BMV. Um but I would also, like I said, I would recommend to have a rehabilitation service where. Um I I agree with Abby that both the prisoner or the wrongdoer and the. Person who was the victim get both counseling as well as any other services that they may or may not need. Um providing the lawyers and such is a really great idea, so I commend Abby for that idea.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Uh actually, Teek, if I may comment on yours.
Okay.
Um about the security guards at the BMV during business hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Would that be just a person that is just kinda taken off the streets? Uh or would it be like a trained police officer or would it or would it be someone who's taken off the streets or something? Not necessarily, that's just an example. Um who is trained, who like, who would you want as these security guards? Because it it does cost a lot of money to input these types of things during uh for. Small things like this. So what what would be your plans for that?
Well, it's a great question. Thank you for asking it. Um well, for me, as I am a police officer as well as Abby is one. Um I would recommend to do an extensive uh search for the correct person for the job. Um and then do testing before they ever become a bodyguard or a guard. For the BMV. Um so it would definitely go through an extensive process to ensure that. They could handle the job, but also be able to protect the people that are there. Um it's definitely something that you don't take lightly and it's not someone you could just take right off of the street. And just say, here, here's your job. So um we would go through the application process. Search through the applicants and and find um. Those who we feel would be suitable for testing. Um not necessarily suitable for the job, but suitable for the testing and then do the extensive testing. For example, as a police officer, before you become a one, you have to go through the shooting training. And the defensive training and various other tasks and it would be something similar, but maybe not. Um as extensive, but nearly extensive, if that makes sense, sir.
I actually have something to add. I feel, I feel that um. Before security guards are brought into the equation, I think that we need to hit the, I will make it my aim to fit. Security cameras in all shops, businesses, even houses, depending on certain situations. Because I feel like we need to take those extra precautions um to make sure that we have evidence if something does happen. And also to allow more security within a person knowing that they have. Um physical security guards like Teek said, but also cameras, so they know that nothing goes unmissed.
Well, I would add to that, that uh as uh Jack, Officer Jaclyn and myself were both responding to that. Situation that he was speaking of, um they did in fact have security cameras, but I do agree that if. The other businesses do not have them, we they, it would be, it would need to be a requirement before a business can be opened. So.
Okay, I'd like to comment on both of yours. Um Teek, I'll start with you first since uh you first answered.
Okay.
Who, okay, obviously on Fridays Bridget pays us for our jobs. Would she be the one who has to pay for the security guards at the BMV or anywhere else or or would it be? Um from the police officers or who? Would it, would they be technically considered for the police force so that would it be? Who who would get, who would have to pay for them?
Well, that's a good question. Um definitely it would be something that would be discussed with the BMV manager. AKA yourself and also um the government, AKA Bridget. And other city council members to either A do fundraisers to pay for the security guard. Or, you know, have the security guard as a volunteer or potentially a government employee. It's just. It would be something that would be discussed in a meeting prior to even allowing anyone to apply for the job.
Abby, as you stated, um. Something about cameras.
Yes.
Um I do think that it would be good for uh there to be more cameras in shops or businesses or something, but. Okay, um. About the houses, uh would you consider that in an invasion of privacy? If you put security cameras in the houses or be more specific, would it be in anyone's house? Would it be in a prisoner's house? Uh somebody on probation, who whose houses would they be put in?
Well, okay, so if they were to, if I was to select a scenario, say, I wanted that I was surprising they were put in everyone's houses. They would only be in certain areas, so that would be places like storage rooms where there is a lot of goods that could be stolen. Um the grounds outside the house for trespassing, areas that are not. An invasion of privacy, so they would not be put in bathrooms or bedrooms as those are the site types that are pri- private. But they would be in places where goods were stored, or so say, all storage rooms, um. Yeah, uh grounds, farms, anyway, cause the places where there are the most, gonna be the most vulnerable places. Places that are most likely to be tackled um and robbed, so they will be the type of spaces that will be fitted with cameras. And the cameras um will be, obviously there'll be like a law requirement, that's why I would aim to, I would have them as a law requirement. That every single property should have cameras, so they would be um paid for by the government. Because obviously it is our responsibility to um supply them. But um obviously, we may, obviously taxes, something that should are being introduced, I believe. Um so that will, that money will probably go towards the safety of others um as standards or fundraisers. Um I think that anything we can do just to ensure that everyone has a le- a high level of security will be done.
I have a question for my fellow.
Sorry, Teek. Um you, so you're saying you put, you want to put them in everyone's house?
Yes, I although there hasn't necessarily been issues in people's houses. I feel that there is never a better opportunity to avoid that. So although we have not maybe had current problems, we do not necessarily know that something would not happen. So just to have that extra bit of security in people's houses, I think it is a good idea.
Okay, Abby, so he- he- here's a hole that I see in your proposal though. What if a a member holds their um more valuable things in their private bedrooms?
Um well, in that case, then I, they will be given an option. If they feel safe enough that they don't want them. Then they don't have to have them, but if they want them, then they can. But obviously. With the invasion of privacy in mind, if they choose not to, that is perfectly fine and it is not required. But what will come hand in hand with the idea of having the security cameras, it will maybe suggest that maybe you don't keep them in. Your bedroom because of privacy invasions and for the most high level of security. If they are in a place where cameras would be suitable, then that will ensure that. Privacy is A, not invaded and also the cameras are in a suitable place that what is appropriate, if you like.
Well, I would like to add to your statement. I agree with the cameras, but. I I see that the camera in the bedroom could be a potential problem.
Yes.
Um so as a counter, I would suggest to maybe look into um finding out about. How to lock chests.
Yes.
To see how that would be efficient, because I feel like that would be more of. An um of appropriate.
Yeah.
Uh factor in the security risks in that specific case if they. Hold their items in their private rooms that they may or may not want others viewing.
Yeah, and I see what you're saying, but I I also feel that at the same time, like, obviously we have buildings such as the bank where we have vaults. And although we don't encourage um things of high value to be put into the vaults. Certain things that are of value, of a high value can be put into the vaults, um and then obviously we will put cameras in there. And monitor who goes in, who goes out, since they are technically admin only areas, um so adds a level of privacy. But also um energy chests are something that everybody has, um so of value could go in there. Um I feel there is a lot of places that could be happen where they could store them and not necessarily need. To worry about how make the option of having cameras in private areas. However, if they decide not to do that and they do wanna keep them in their personal areas, then that is fine also. And they can choose and if they don't want them, that is perfectly fine, but I feel that we will still want to monitor. Other areas of the house, um such as the grounds outside for trespassing, because that will help to eliminate. The chances of trespassers actually being able to get inside the property to steal things from personal areas or storage rooms.
Right, well, I guess the second part of my question would be is, you know, how would you feel about doubling up on security? For example, having the added security cameras, but also having the added security of the ability to lock certain chests.
I think that that is actually something that we definitely should look into because that is a very good idea. However. If we, if that is not something that is actually possible, then the security cameras are will also will be the best option. Um because I feel like we, you could offer people to hire the security guards, which I think is an amazing idea. But I think the problem, only problem with that is not everyone will be able to afford to have security guards and not everyone's gonna want. Every the people in their private spaces to watch them. Whereas they might prefer a an op- option where they don't have. Various people, security guards, people lurking around the houses and the ca- cameras that they have are not in a place where it would invade privacy.
Right, so which do you feel would be more cost effective than the security guard? Or the lock chest or having a security camera?
I think that the um security council would be the best option because although they are cost efficient, because obviously they would. As I will aim to make it a law requirement, um it's not something that other people would have to pay for. Um and if they do say pay taxes, it would only be a small amount, because the taxes will be um. Majorly used on other things that would benefit the people more. However, I do feel that the cameras benefit people to such an extent that. If they if they do pay taxes on it, it should only be a small amount, but it's because of significance, I feel like in that situation, they should pay something. However, I do also feel that cameras would be a lot less time consuming on all parties, a lot less privacy invasion, as I said before. But I also feel like it's gonna have more um protection overall, because the cameras will never ever go off. Whereas security guards, they may be off duty, um and you can't guarantee that you'll have enough staff. To alternate, so you know. So I I feel, no, no, I say, I feel like you might not, you cannot guarantee that you'll have enough security guard staff. To ensure that there is always someone on duty. So whereas the cameras will be constant consistently on, um obviously they will be, obviously they will need to. Obviously, there will need to be people that do monitor the cameras, but since they do not always go off, um. Although we would want them to be monitored a large proportion of the time, if there is a small portion of time where they are not monitored. Then it's fine, because all the footage will still be able to be accessed, but we will need to ensure that that the room where the cameras are kept are. Locked and only accessible to certain people.
Yes, but there, the, as I was going to say, was that's a problem with your your theory there. Um, what if someone comes in and steals the camera? Um, I I do know that certain cases have happened where in the police station, I know for a fact a a camera was stolen. Previously.
Well, um, my aim would be to have them in discreet places and, um, several of them. And obviously, since they they are programmed in such a way, it would be hard to remove every single camera. And also allowing for coverage in every, in all areas, it's gonna be very difficult for them to be reached. And very difficult for them all to be removed, so if you, rather than restricting maybe houses to one per room or as such. I think there would need to be several, so, because I don't think that it would be easy enough to be able to remove all of them. Which would mean that there will always be some kind of protection for that person, all that business.
Okay, Wyatt, I think you had something to say.
Um, probably I just don't know anymore. Um, I do have two more questions.
I also, I also have two, so. You ans- you do one, I'll do one.
Okay.
And Jaclyn does not have anymore, right? Jaclyn? It's safe.
Okay, um, this is kind of a two parter question, this is for both of you. Um, what do you think is the biggest issue here on the server? And how do you plan to resolve that issue?
Go ahead, Abby.
I, I think that that is actually a difficult question, because I don't feel like. Um, there is any specific issues that are not controlled, although if I had to pick one, I would maybe. Um, think about, I would consider maybe um deaths. An issue on the server, you know, when it comes to like killings, because of, um. You know, obviously, it's like banter and stuff, but in some cases that when they are taken to court cases, it is quite an issue and it's an even bigger issue, because it's sort of. He said, she said, and who started it, so, um, I feel like that is an issue that should be more controlled. Um, and more monitored.
Um, I feel like theft is one of the biggest problems that we've had here on the server. Um, I know at the police station, there's been several cases of thefts, um. And and I feel like we can better control it, I mean, you can't obviously fully one hundred percent control theft. But I I feel like the police force could, you know, maybe. Do a lot better about getting on top of cases and staying on top of the current cases and clearing them. So that we can deal with the theft and move forward into other cases that may have a higher priority. Um, but just making sure that, you know, everyone understands that theft is gonna happen, but also. If you don't want things stolen from you, don't steal from other people.
I asked this last city council debate and it's a question that I always ask, or will always ask. What would you say your biggest weaknesses and your biggest strong point?
Um, I think I'll go first. Uh, my biggest weakness is is that, you know. As I said previously, I care way too much about people in general. And while that can be a strong suit, it can also be a downfall, um, because you can get up, caught up into certain things. Um, for example, you can get caught up in a a a police case that, you know, maybe. Closer to being more personal to you than other cases may or may not be. Um, as it is difficult to keep personal feelings out of cases. Um, but it's also difficult when you do have to get in touch with those feelings. Um, I believe my strong suit is being able to talk with people freely. Um, while I'm not the greatest speaker in the world, never claimed to be, but I feel like. One-on-one communication is a good, strong suit for me.
I feel that my downfall is that I don't always have the ability to voice things. In the best ways, um, which leads to misconception, and I feel that I also. Don't always know exactly what to say, which means I maybe have not, do not give the best advice, I don't have. Um, the clearest idea on what to do next, um, but I feel my strong point is that, um. Although maybe my vo- my issues of voicing it may make me unapproachable, I feel that. Apart from, if you look beyond that, I am a very approachable person and, um. I pride myself in being a, which would be, feel like I can have a genuine reputation, have good communication skills and can offer people, um. Help if should they need it, and also the ability to, um. You know, guide people in the right way, I think, I feel like that's my strong point.
Pretty simple question, um, why should I vote for you? Because I I I still am on the fence about who I'm voting for, um, I do have liked things that both parties have said. But there are things I don't like about both parties. Um, why, in general, what are your biggest things that you will do here on the server if elected? And just why should I vote for you?
I think you should vote for me because I have, aside from the fact that I have, um. I feel I I would like to feel that I'm very trustworthy and, um, approachable. I feel I have been on the server such a lengthy time, although Teak has also been on the server for a long time, I would not deny that. But I feel like I maybe have a bit more experience on the server than Teak may, um, I have. Although I probably don't have better relationships with people, but I find that I have closer bonds with the people I am friendly with. Which to me means that I am a very um trustworthy person, I am loyal. And that I am definitely gonna be able to listen to you and, um, you know, fully understand and appreciate. What you are asking for and what you are looking for, and I also feel that I have, um. A very strong ability to be able to, um, lead you in the right direction and. Take the right actions in order to get what you want done.
And I feel like you should, um, vote for me, as I said in my opening statement, you know. You have a very tough decision here on who to vote for, and I definitely would commend you for voting for me or for my. Fellow candidate, Abby, as I feel like she would do a great job as well, but I also feel that I would do a great job. Um, and I feel like I could bring to the table some maybe different perspective outside of the box. And creative ideas that maybe you guys may or may not have thought of, um. Whereas you guys may think on a, the different side of the scale, and I might be on the other side of the scale and that could be. A really great thing, because you can come in the middle and kind of compromise and come together and make a really great idea all around. Um, and make it a, um, a a community effort.
Good, good answer to the both of you.
Okay. To end off this debate, I have one more question. And the question is for both of you. What are some of your plans to actually better the future of the server? And don't promise us things that you can't give us.
I'll let Abby go first.
Um. I will guarantee that I will, um, listen to you and I will take what you want. What each individual person wants, and I will wer- I will work hard and I will strive to make sure that at least. Four out of, say, six of, um, issues or wants of individual peoples on the server will be. Carried out or at least discussed, um, my aim will be to at least discuss each and every single, um, idea. Or worry or, you know, option, um, to make sure that people know that they ha- are heard. And that they are being listened to and actions are being taken to at least try to get what they want.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question for me?
I sure can. What are some of your plans to better the future of our server? And don't promise us things that you cannot actually give us.
Of course, there's no promises that I can't keep. Um, I will strive to ensure that everyone has a chance to, you know, be heard and. Get ideas flowing within the server, but also I would. Promise to share the server and potentially bring in some newer members. Who, you know, could also create better ideas and, you know, generate just a better flow of things. You know, with having newer personalities and having even better times when we hang out.
Is that all for both of your guys' last statements?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so I hereby mark this debate as finished. I wanna thank the audience, which only two people showed up, because everybody else on the server sucks! I mean, hi, um.
Boo!
But, um, I wanna thank the candidates for coming. The two of the three that actually showed.
Boo!
And I hope that everybody is able to vote, I know it's going to be very, very close. Because I'm not even sure who I'm voting for at this point. As I'm pretty sure that most people are not sure who they're voting for at this point. Voting ends the last day, actually, no, it doesn't, it ends, it ends. Voting ends on, in two weeks, Saturday, May twenty eighth at eleven fifty nine PM.
Go vote!
So make sure you go vote, the winner will be announced on the twenty ninth after midnight. So technically still Saturday night in a way, but not actually. So.
One last thing.
Sure.
I would like to thank Abby for being a really great candidate to run against.
Woo!
I wanna thank you for you asking me questions and. You are a very strong person, that you have a very strong game and I'm, I'm sure you're gonna get very far.
Thank you, as are you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks everyone for coming and go vote!